Well, as you may recall, the board is in the process of viewing and concluding the public hearing on the Hudson Highlands Reserve project. And there was some concern over how to conclude the SECRE process. There were questions as to how can we tell if the project has been analyzed sufficiently? Do we need more information such that we might need to issue a positive declaration? Or is the EAF Part III enough? And there was some question as to what it means to mitigate potential adverse environmental impacts to the maximum extent practicable. And what we decided to do, in an effort to kind of help the board move forward, was to hold this workshop to discuss the SECRE process in general terms. And we may touch on how it would apply to the, again, in broad brush strokes, how it would apply to the Horton Road Project, the Hudson Highland Reserve Project, in particular. Now, as I'm sure you all recall, the purpose of SECRE, the State Environmental Quality Review Act, which imposes this review requirement, is to identify potential significant adverse environmental impacts that any action or project presents. To take a hard look at those potential significant adverse environmental impacts through having the applicant submit data and studies, information generally, have your consultants look at it, and if necessary, and if necessary, to acquire your own studies, independent studies, to be done on particular aspects of it. And the starting point for SECRE review is the environmental assessment form, the EAF. And an EAF has three parts, as, again, I'm just kind of giving you the background here, we'll speed it up, has three parts. And Part 1 provides project information, tells you all about what's being proposed to be done, and it gives you specific information about the site, and it discusses potential impacts that it may have. In this case, for example, it indicates that the project is visible from the Fonstark Park. So that means that there's potential visual impacts just by virtue of being visible from that. How significant they are is another matter, you're going to have to look into it, but that's the type of information that you get from your Part 1. Part 2 you went through, and what you did was identified what you considered might be potential, well, no impacts, or small to moderate impacts, well, no to small impacts, or moderate to large impacts. What you need to look at, once you identify the moderate to large impacts, is, well, one, are those things actually going to occur, because they're just potential? And two, if it seems like there's a potential for them to occur, how are they going to be mitigated? What's going to be done to prevent those potential adverse things from happening? And the applicant, at that point, can come back with a Part 3. And Part 3 is all the information and studies that the applicant is submitting, at least, which says, this is why either that potential impact is not going to occur, or this is what we're going to do to mitigate its impact, so that they're not going to be so bad. Because SECRE imposes an obligation to mitigate adverse impacts to the maximum extent practicable. Doesn't say you have to eliminate them altogether. Doesn't say that you have to spend, you know, a king's ransom in order to prevent it from happening altogether. It requires the planning board, or whoever the lead agency in SECRE is, to take a look at what the problem, the potential adverse impact is, and look at the proposed solve for that, and say, is this a reasonable thing to require? Is this a reasonable thing for the applicant to offer? Because if they offer something that isn't effective, they may just have to find something that's going to cost more in order to resolve the problem, or they're going to have to change the project such that it doesn't present that problem anymore. By the same token, it would be unreasonable for a lead agency to say, well, we don't care how much it's going to cost you, we don't care how detrimental it will be to your project, you must do, I don't know, pick whatever it might be, you have to plant 50 acres with full-grown trees so there'll be no adverse impacts, even though it's going to cost you, you know, millions of dollars to do that, that would be unreasonable. So determining whether an adverse impact has been mitigated to the maximum extent practicable is kind of a subjective reasonable man's standard-type thing. I can tell you this, as long as what it is you require, this board requires, lead agency requires, to, for an applicant to do to mitigate adverse impacts, significant adverse impacts to maximum practicable, is reasonable, has a rational basis, the courts will uphold it. It's only when you abuse your discretion and act unreasonably that the applicant can say, well, no, that's not reasonable for you to require. Okay? So there's a broad range of things, and some you may be, you know, more of a stickler-on, and some you may be like, I don't think that's very likely to happen, so, you know, we're not going to be so, we're not going to be so strict as far as what it is we're requiring. There's a range there, and you decide, as lead agency, where things fall. Okay? So, to bring it back to the, well, let me stop, has anybody got any questions about that so far? We all on the same page? Okay. So to bring it back, again, I don't want to get into any detail, but just in broad strokes, to the Hudson Highland Reserve. If you look at, and I know you all have, I mean, been working on this for a while now, the Part 2 EAF, you'll see that there are a number of general areas which have specific boxes checked as to potential moderate to large impacts. Those areas are impacts on land, which come, of course, from just the fact that this is, you know, there's a number of acres that are going to be under development here. Impacts on surface water, and I think in general terms, we're talking about the pond and adjoining brook. Impacts on groundwater, this would come from things like, you know, we're going to put a subsurface waste system in, there's going to be an equestrian center, or at least that's what's proposed, and that could have effects on groundwater. There's going to be pesticides used, they've, part of the applicant's project, that could have impacts on groundwater. There's some other ones, you know, they're in a floodplain, so the building has to be sensitive to that. Impacts on plants and animals. I mean, this is a little bit of a tricky one, again, I don't want to get into any detail. I think the only, unless I missed something, the only real threatened or endangered species is the bats. And the bats' concerns can be avoided by only cutting down the trees between, what, November and March, the end of March, I think it is. And after that, the bats, because they're hibernating then, wouldn't be affected. There are other species which are affected, too, don't get me wrong, but I mean, the bats, I think, are the main one, and that's the type of fix that they can put on that. Like I said, there's general impacts from removal of this much forest, but, you know, sometimes there's not a lot you can do to mitigate those impacts, so that's the type of thing that you're going to have to look at, again, from a reasonable standard as far as that goes. Aesthetic impacts, you know, there's some scenic impacts, already talked about Fonstark. General visual impacts you're going to want to take a look at to make sure that there isn't, you know, an unsightly appearance from the road, that type of thing. Historic, archaeological, there's old buildings on the site, and they do propose to preserve them, it's the type of thing, and you'll deal with your consultants on this, that you'll look at and say, well, you know, is that enough just to preserve them? I mean, if it was, you know, Revolutionary War headquarters or something like that, you might say, gee, it's not enough to preserve the building, we want a, you know, half acre around it preserved and maintained, and we want signs put up indicating that this is a historic, I mean, that type of thing. But you talk with your consultants, and, you know, you use your sense as far as what it is, and decide if what they're proposing is enough. Transportation, traffic has been discussed at great length, and there's a traffic study in the EAF. You need to decide if that traffic study is sufficient for you or not, your consultants, again, will provide you with information on that, or if you're going to require an independent one. Noise, odor, light, mostly from construction and the fact that there'll be new, you know, new development there, to some extent from the equestrian center. And consistency with community plan, it does need a zoning variance, but it's a voluntary variance that they're seeking just in order to allow more of the property to qualify, to be counted within the total acreage. So you've got these various areas in your Type 2, which you've identified as moderate to large impacts. And you have this study, the Part 3, that the applicant has submitted. Now, I'm not sure if all, none of you are engineers, or one of you's an engineer? I forget exactly who does what, but, yeah. No, Gainer, I remember. Although, you know, but other than that, I don't, well, maybe not. All right. The point is this, nobody expects you to, I mean, you should, of course, all, you know, read through this as best you can, but nobody expects you to make the analysis of the proposed mitigation measures, or whether, in some cases, they may claim that there is not going, that the proposed impact may not occur. Instead, you hire consultants. And what the consultants do is they report to you on, for example, traffic, and they would say, we have this traffic report in, and I got to tell you, the numbers are uncontestable, we really don't see any reason for you to look at it farther, there's just not going to be any significant adverse traffic impacts from this. Particularly if, as they're proposing, and I'm not talking about them, I'm just generalizing here, you understand, just hypothetically, as they're proposing, for example, a left-hand turning lane, or as they're proposing to signalize that intersection, or as they're proposing to improve the site distances at that corner, whatever it might be. If the applicant incorporates those aspects of, safety aspects of traffic into his plan, and your consultants agree with that, he's mitigated that potential adverse impact to the maximum extent practicable. You'd be hard-pressed to say, I don't believe our consultant, I think he's just wrong. No, you can say to your consultant, I hear what you're saying, I hear what you're saying, but what are the alternatives? What else could be done? You know, they're going to clear that intersection so that the sight lines are greater, and yeah, that's a help, but, you know, what if they, what if they put in, you know, some sort of traffic signal? What if they put in yield signs or slow signs on their own property up the way? I mean, what are my alternatives here? And you can ask your consultants that, and your consultants can come back to you and say, well, there's this, and that, and the third thing. And then you can talk to the applicant about whether or not those are reasonable things, and they may say, well, we can't do that because we don't own the roadway up the road, you know, or it would cost us, you know, $100,000 to put that stoplight up, or whatever it might be. And that's how, once you have the input from your consultants, and further input from the applicant, if need be, you can decide for yourselves if they've mitigated the adverse impact to the maximum extent practical. And what you need to do is go through all of these individual impacts that have been identified as potentially large, have your consultants report to you on them, and then decide what you think. Do you want more information, do you not? Now, to bottom-line it, if you talk with your consultants, and you decide that there's potential impacts which they're just not being reasonable about, there's things that they could do that they're just not willing to do, and you're just not happy with what it is they've proposed, or perhaps you have a proposal from them and proposals from your consultants, but you have reason to believe, and you'd need a sound basis for this, but you have reason to believe that there wasn't enough study done for your consultants to make a reasonable determination as to whether what's being proposed sufficiently mitigates the adverse impacts, or perhaps your consultants say to you, I don't know what the alternatives would be, the applicant hasn't provided me with enough information, I just can't tell based on this. If one of those two things happens, either they haven't mitigated it to maximum extent practicable, or you just don't have enough information, then you're in a position to issue a positive declaration, and you would require the EIS process to go forward. This is not something to be done lightly. The EIS process is lengthy, it is expensive, and it really should be undertaken, in this case, much earlier in the process. And if it would be undertaken this late in the process, I would think it would be because you reached some sort of loggerhead with the applicant, and they just won't provide you with more information, and you just won't accept what they're proposing as mitigating impact, mitigating measures. Okay? If, however, you have consultants who say what they're proposing is acceptable, you know, what they're proposing is not going to have adverse impacts on the pond, for example, it is not going to be erosion and sediment, there's not going to be algae bloom, there's not going to be, I don't know, other adverse environmental impacts, you really kind of have to issue a negative declaration, at least as to that one, you know, I mean, you have to chuck off all the boxes before you do that, but I mean, if that's what happens, and you've looked at potential alternatives, and it looks like it's reasonable, then they've mitigated the, you know, either they're not going to happen, the adverse impacts, or you've mitigated them to the maximum extent practicable, and you should issue a negative declaration. But that's where you're at. You need to, at this point, talk with your consultants, go over these points. If you want to find out about alternatives, ask them, and we'll have back and forth with the applicant, and, you know, see where you come out. So, yeah, that's my summary of it. I don't know, a few questions, do you want to talk with the consultants, or what?
Anyone on the board? No? No? Graham?
I thought that was a very good summary of the process and where you've been, and some of the higher-level questions that you have to ask yourselves as the decision-makers, as the lead agency. I pass around to you several sections of the New York State DEC EAF workbook. And if you're familiar with that workbook, it's an electronic document with lots of links and articles such as this two-page one on evaluating significance, and a three-page one on understanding significance. These are but two of the many guidance documents that comprise the workbook and are available online. I thought they would be particularly useful for you tonight, given where we are in the process and building off of what Steve just presented, in terms of the process and your obligations. Earlier on, I think it was in December, when we had a preliminary discussion about this, we also referred to you to the actual SECRE regulations on determining significance. And the documents that I passed around tonight really build off of the regulations, and you're really bound by the regulations, the guidance is there for you to help understand it. Section 617.7 of the SECRE regulations is entitled Determining Significance, and it provides the process and requirements for that, and provides a little bit of guidance on the criteria for determining significance. So subsection C, and I'm referring now to the regulations and not directly to the guidance documents, which I'll get to in a second. Subsection C of 617.7 is the criteria for determining significance, and it lists a number of, I think there are 12 items. Item 1 is, for example, whether or not the project would have a substantial adverse change in existing air quality, ground or surface water quality or quantity, traffic or noise levels, substantial increase in solid waste production, et cetera. Item 2, the removal or destruction of large quantities of vegetation or fauna. Item 3, the impairment of the environmental characteristics of a critical environmental area, et cetera. All of these criteria for determining significance are then reflected in the EAF. So once the, once the DEC created the SECRE regulations, they had to create the form, right? And the form is now in its second or third iteration. The form that the applicant filled out and that you all reviewed contains questions that get to each and every one of these things, right? So as Steve said, we went through Part 2 and identified which were moderate to large and which were small or no. And in doing that, we use the moderate to large in a couple ways. One, primarily to indicate where we were most concerned, and two, to ask the applicant for additional information. We weren't making a determination at that point whether it was really moderate or large, or even if it existed at all. We took the liberties of saying, if we checked moderate or large on the EAF Part 2, it was simply indicating the planning board's desire to see more information on that matter. Right? So that's what became the Part 3, as we're calling it, or the Expanded EAF. So then, how do you interpret all of that information? Given that we've reviewed it, my staff has reviewed all of the technical studies, in November of last year, we issued a letter with a number of further revisions that the applicant came back to later in that month, and in the December meeting, I stood before you and said, we've reviewed all of these revisions, we're now satisfied that they've addressed all of our concerns. Those are just your consultant's concerns, not necessarily your concerns. And that we think you have enough information to move forward with making a determination of significance. It was then determined that you wanted to hear from the public, and so we initiated the public hearing process. So now you're at the point of saying, okay, we have to issue a determination of significance. And as Steve outlined, you have two decisions, two options there. A negative declaration would indicate that, on the body of evidence, there is a determination that there would be no significant adverse impacts that could not be avoided, minimized, or mitigated to the maximum extent practicable. Or the second one would be to issue a positive declaration, requiring the applicant to prepare a formal environmental impact statement and going through that whole lengthy process. So, that's where we get to these two documents, evaluating significance and understanding significance. And I'm sure you're all looking for me to say, it's really easy, all you have to do is look in this column and say, check, it's not. And I'll give you a few snippets from these several pages that I gave you. On the evaluating significance, it says, the term significant is somewhat subjective. That is because the significance of an impact is dependent on the magnitude, duration, and likelihood of that impact occurring. It is also dependent on the scale and context of the project. And I think those are the two important things, the scale and context, right? Those are two concepts that are used throughout environmental impact assessment to help guide decision-makers like you to determine whether something is actually significant and adverse. So the scale of the project, how big is the project, the context, where is it located, what types of environmental features are present in that environment or that could be affected? And then some of the other issues that affected, which were also mentioned in that opening statement, were the magnitude, duration, and likelihood. And for that, that's the second handout, which is understanding significant. And it defines those terms as, magnitude assesses factors such as severity, size, or extent of an impact. Duration looks at how long an impact may last. Importance, another term they throw in, importance relates to how many people are going to be impacted or affected by the project, or what role a resource, including natural resources, may have in the community. And then likelihood is measures, measures how probable it is that the impact may occur. And it, again, reminds you, taken together, magnitude, duration, and likelihood, along with the context and scale of the proposal, define an impact's importance. Okay? So you go to the EAF workbook, hoping for some guidance, it gives you a lot of theoretical constructs that you have to muddle through, but those are the sorts of things that we're looking at. Steve mentioned it before, that you can't potentially avoid, minimize, mitigate everything to the fullest extent, it's to the maximum extent practicable. SECRE recognizes that 100% certainty is never a possibility, that you have to look at the maximum extent practicable, the scale and context of the project, the scale and context of the resources, the importance of the resources. And then you also have to do this thing, that I always, I always do this motion, you have to balance the potential negative impacts against the positive impacts of a project, and whether or not, in the broad range of social, environmental, and economic issues, the project will have a benefit. Right? So those are the sorts of concepts that you're given by the DEC to help you in your framework. The other thing I'd like to say is that what you have accomplished here in causing the applicant to prepare this extended, expanded EAF for the Part 3, is, in essence, an environmental impact statement. The amount of material, the depth of evaluation in here is comparable, in many respects, not in all respects, but in many respects, to what you would see in an environmental impact statement. There are certain differences that we don't have, we don't have an evaluation of alternatives, we don't have certain of the mandated chapters that SECRE requires in the EIS. But you have a substantial body of evidence here that I feel answers many of the questions that we addressed, all of the questions that we addressed as potential moderate to large impacts. So that's why I said in December that I thought you had enough material to substantiate, if you were to go that way, a negative declaration. Right? But it's truly your opinion, it's not my opinion that matters, it's your opinion. Right? So if you feel that, on the balance of the issues, that some of the issues do not avoid, minimize, or mitigate potential impacts to the maximum extent practicable, then you could issue a positive declaration and require further information on that.
If I could tack on one more thing? Just briefly. You need to understand that although technically, SECRE review is separate from your approval of the project, because there's criteria for a negative declaration, and then there's separate criteria for conservation subdivisions, there's some overlap there, but those are really two separate decisions. Notwithstanding that they're separate decisions, there's some, like I say, some overlap. And when you make your SECRE determination and find that there won't be adverse environmental impact, if that's the way you go, adverse environmental impacts from the project as designed, you will be hard-pressed to, in your decision on the approval, say, but, we want you to do this, that, and the other thing, because we're concerned about the environmental results, the environmental impacts. Okay? Once you, once you make this determination, you're, not completely, I mean, it doesn't foreclose, you know, all discretion, but you're really tied to the conservation subdivision regulations, and you may have some look back to what you decided on SECRE. So before you run out and do your SECRE determination, you want to say to yourself, all right, I'm concerned about, and again, I, please, I'm not speaking about the project in particular, I'm just giving you examples, okay? I'm concerned about the impacts of the equestrian center, I'm concerned about the impacts on the pond, I'm concerned about the separation of the, you know, the woods here, so in terms of wildlife. You're going to want to take a real hard look and make darn sure you're satisfied with those aspects of the project before you adopt your negative declaration. I am by no means saying that you shouldn't adopt a negative declaration if that's appropriate step, I'm just saying, make sure that you are satisfied with the evidence that's been given to you, that those impacts, the impacts regarding that aspect of the project, if there are any, I mean, there may be some where there aren't, but I mean, assuming that you've identified some, have been mitigated to the maximum extent practicable before you sign off on that. Because when you sign off on that and give a negative declaration, like I say, when you go to make your determination on the conservation subdivision, you got to keep those in mind.
So you can't go back?
Well, if there was new evidence indicating there was a change in the project, or that there was some facts which had been totally overlooked, you could vacate the negative declaration. It doesn't happen very often, though.
So, making a neg, just to be really clear, making a neg deck would mean accepting the project as it's been designed so far?
No.
Sorry. Go ahead, Graham. I jumped on you there. I'm glad you brought that up, because I had in my notes to talk about that, and I failed to, so I'm glad Steve brought it up. In your consideration of the subdivision application and the site plan, right, consistent with the conservation subdivision zoning requirements, you have the ability to ask for further detail on certain information. The project as it has been developed so far is developed to a certain point which is sufficient to analyze potential impacts under SECRE, but you might have requests for additional information. I think one of the examples might be, let's see a little bit more detail on the equestrian center, where is that manure management location going to be, and where is that parking lot going to be, and how do they relate to one another? So you don't have the drawings at that level yet, and you could certainly ask for modifications to the project that address those concerns you have. All right, I see that you've placed the manure, the dumpster for the manure at this location, opposite the barn or adjacent to the barn. We're concerned about how the grading of the land around that might, you know, cause stormwater to flow across that, could you modify the grading such that it doesn't do that? Right? And those are conversations that you can have with me, with Ron, about those very detailed elements of the site design that might further manage, or avoid, minimize, or mitigate, the potential impacts that you identified in the EAF. So you can ask for more detail, but as Steve was saying, the general construct of what has been presented in the EAF really should inform that process. It should not be completely different from what was conveyed in the EAF.
Well, let me, let me put it in a little bit simpler terms, maybe. All right. You got your criteria for the conservation subdivision. And like any other subdivision, all right, the requirements that you can impose are going to be based on, basically, three things, three main things, okay? The first is going to be environmental impacts, are we going to result in erosion, are we building on steep slopes, whatever it might be, you know? The second is going to be engineering considerations. Gee, if you build in a floodplain and there's a flood, everything will be wiped out, it'll be really bad. They're similar to the environmental, but they're different, because they're the thing called good and accepted engineering practice, and they're going to have to conform to that in everything that they propose. And the third would be planning. Sometimes it makes sense to build, you know, a particular subdivision, a particular way, maybe closer to the road, maybe further from the road, maybe at the bottom of the hill, maybe at the top of the hill, whatever it might be, but planning comes into it, engineering comes into it, environmental comes into it. Once you make your SECRE determination, environmental's pretty much done. You will be, like I said, very hard-pressed to say, we're going to require, and I'll pick on the pond. And again, I don't mean this, I'm by no means suggesting this is an appropriate thing to do, I'm just using it as an example. You can't go and look at the pond and say, we want you to move those houses back another 100 feet because we think it's going to have adverse environmental impacts on the pond, if you've adopted a negative declaration saying there aren't going to be any negative environmental impacts on the pond from the plan as currently constituted. Now, you can require those houses to be put back further if good and accepted engineering practice requires it. Gosh, you're building on a steep slope, I don't want to see you do that, you got to pull back some more, or planning requires. pull back some more, or planning requires it. Gee, the layout of the property just makes no sense this way. You have, you know, five or eight, or whatever it is around this pond, everybody else strung out there, it wouldn't be appropriate, you really should move them back. You can rely on those two factors to change that. But you can't go back, once you've done your negative declaration, and say, "We're making you do this because it'll have adverse environmental impacts," because you've already said there won't be any. So it's just something to keep in mind, I'm, again, you know, just make sure you're satisfied is all I'm saying.
The question I had then, Steve, on item number three, when you say plans, we know any project, building or anything else, even though we've made a determination, say it's a negative determination, but as the plans go on, the project engineer, our advisors say, "Wait a minute, this is, this does not conform with certain engineering." That's, that doesn't supersede or invalidate the declaration, does it?
That's, would be example, one of the other two things outside of environmental that would justify changes to the plans, good and accepted engineering practice.
But only changes to the plans, not to the determination.
Well, you can change the plans without it resulting in a potential significant adverse impact, environmental impact.
Okay.
But then again, if you change the plans enough, it may.
Well, yeah.
And then you might have to revisit SECRAS.
Right. Being able to have more TV time and watching this whole meeting from February on YouTube, which was really great, I looked at a lot, I read a lot of comments, and then in the last two days, I got, we got the responses to the questions, and I tried to go through some of them, it was like 42 pages, I believe, Mr. O'Rourke, that a lot of the questions cover the same area, but the one thing that came up in my mind, among others, that I don't know that it was clear, and I'd like to bring this up before we make a determination, is I was mentioned of the Aquifer study, and I contacted Tim Miller's office. And I was told that the Aquifer study was issued in December of 1991. And somebody said in the meeting in February that they had moved away, and 30 years later came back and there were 25 new houses above them, and the water had become more saline or, and the level had dropped, and so on and so forth. If I were to ask, is the problem with ground, with the water table sufficiently addressed in the EAF or in this study? Is that grounds, what is that grounds for? I mean, where is it?
Well, you want to have that addressed before you adopt a SECRAS determination, one way or the other, and what you want to do is talk to your consultants about that, have them explain to you why this is an appropriate study to go off of, or if it should be updated, or changes should be made. But that's, that's these gentlemen's prerogative.
Okay, it's, this is one of, one thing that struck me, because a number of people address the issue of the water table.
That's the type of thing you should be discussing.
And having been involved with the Glassbury Court thing, I know that firefighting and relying on a pond is extremely important, especially with lots, with one acres, for instance, a lot of grass, a lot of feeding it, and so on and so forth, and putting water on it and so forth, how much would I draw down? I don't know that we need to look into something like that, how much effect it would have on groundwater and the water table, not groundwater, but the water table.
I suggest that what you might want to do, and I mean, it's up to the board, of course, is, you know, go forward with the public hearing tonight, the continued public hearing, perhaps be in a position to close that, and then we'll start into SECRAS review. And even after the public hearing is closed, asking the applicant and your consultant for information and, you know, clarification is still fair game.
Well, he still may, he may have it in there, but as you pointed out, the size of it, it may be in there, it may be that it wasn't explained fully to my comprehension, or it may not be fully explained, and to have him.
Any questions, any of the board members have about any of the studies or issues are fair game, they should ask the consultants to explain them.
Before determination, but easily after the public hearing is closed.
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else?
I have one question. When you say our experts and consultants and like that, do we consider, for example, the Conservation Board expert?
Well, Conservation Board certainly gives you valuable input, and it's entitled to, you know, some deference, but I don't know that unless they're qualified as experts and they can show you, I'm, you know, here a certified arborist, or, you know, something along those lines, that you give that the same credence as you give to someone who has a license to give you information. But again, if you're not satisfied with the reports in the record, and your consultants can't satisfy you, that they don't need more information, you can call for additional studies to be done.
And the fire department?
Well, the fire department's an interesting, you know, they're kind of hybrid, as far as that goes. I mean, they're certainly relevant in terms of things like impacts on water. Most of though, I won't say most of, a big chunk, though, of what it is they're talking about are really more site-specific things in terms of internal circulation of roadways and gating things. That's more site plan consideration than SECRAS determination, although, like I say, with the water and things like that, it does bleed over a little bit. I suppose traffic as well.
I have a question. If a positive is declared, declaration, is that, would that, can that be used, that document there, towards the environmental impact statement?
Well.
Or are they starting from scratch?
I wouldn't say that they're starting from scratch in the slightest. I think that the material that they've assembled here in the EAF Part II, plus the material that was in the conservation analysis, which was another binder of similar size, could be assembled into an environmental impact statement with a few additional new items. As I said before, the SECRAS regulations require that an environmental impact statement contains several chapters that are not represented here. One is an executive summary, which obviously is fairly easy to prepare, if it's not already prepared in this.
One of the binders we had, started out with an executive summary, now I know it's particular, not the same, okay.
Yeah, the executive summary would summarize all of the technical analyses in the DEIS, and show you the principal conclusions. So it really is something new for that document. That would be the applicant. It's typical, and the SECRAS regulations do state that, the typical process is that an applicant prepares the draft environmental impact statement. The other chapter that would be required is an alternatives chapter, which would require you to look at a range of reasonable and feasible alternatives that meet the objectives of the project sponsor. So you're not looking at a range of alternatives, "Well, we could just keep it all as open space," or "We could put a museum there," right? If that's, that's really not what the.
Or warehouse.
Or a warehouse. Right. If the zoning allows for it, there's an argument to be said that, well, yeah, if the zoning allows that, then you should look at that as an alternative. However, if it doesn't meet the project sponsor's objectives, then there's, there's really no rationality. The only time that you would do something like that is if there's a reasonable expectation that if this project were not approved, a warehouse could come in. I suppose you bring that up as a reasonable option because it's been proposed at the site, or something like that.
Pseudo-inside joke.
Okay. But it's, it's relevant.
You don't get it, obviously.
I don't get it, but it's relevant and I appreciate. So let's, let's go with this, I'll play the rube, right? So the warehouse is proposed, yeah, I stepped right into it. So the warehouse is proposed because it's allowed by zoning theoretically, right? And, you know, if this project weren't approved, then somebody could come along and build that, right? Well, now, a warehouse use on this site would have certain impacts, such as traffic impacts, such as visual impacts, such as impacts to surface water. And you could use that other alternative to compare the impacts of the proposed project with that project, right? So there are ways that you can use the alternatives to help make that contextual basis. And then following that, there are a number of chapters, the SECRAS regulations require you to have an assessment of the use and conservation of energy, irreplaceable impacts, or irretrievable and irreducible commitment of resources, the growth-inducing impacts, and I think there are two more that I'm forgetting, very kind of minor chapters that are typically not applied or really relevant to a private development project, but are more relevant to a public action. But those are the structural elements of the DEIS that would be missing from this. And then there are, of course, the procedural elements that Steve referred to. While it's not required by the regulations, it's common practice to hold a public hearing on the DEIS. And then following the public hearing, a final environmental impact statement is prepared, which responds to all the comments that were received. So there is a time duration that is certainly considerable, that should be factored into that.
If I could just comment on, when Graham says that they wouldn't have to start all over again, he's just talking substantively. He does not mean procedurally. If this board were to adopt a positive declaration, the EIS process would start from square one. And what we'd start out with is what's called a scoping document. And you'd hold a scoping session. And people would come in and they'd say, "We want you to look at," and, I mean, you don't know what they're going to come in and say, probably everything you can imagine under this project, okay? And then what they'd have to do is take this, basically tear it apart, put together an executive summary, and have the sections on this respond to the various items raised in the scoping document. It's not as easy as just taking this and saying, "This is our EIS." It's, it's a time-consuming, detailed process, it's not easy. And then we would have, and I'm not sure that it's optional, we would have a public hearing on the DEIS, and everybody who came in, and look, you know, I think people have been very reasonable on this, there's a lot of legitimate concerns that have been raised. I'm not suggesting that people would come in frivolously, but you need to understand, when you open it up to the public, you don't know what's going to happen, and you just can't predict that, okay? And people could come in and they could say, "We have 200 different, 500 different comments." And in an FEIS, you have to respond to every one of those comments and show that you've addressed the concerns. So in addition to this document, you're going to have an FEIS on top of it like this. And then after that, we have to prepare a finding statement. A finding statement has to be equally detailed, all right? So I'm not suggesting that you should not do that. I just want you to be aware that if you do do that, it's not as simple as saying to the applicant, "Oh, okay, we'll just slap the title DEIS on this and you're off to the races." It doesn't work that way.
Who participates in scoping?
Well, this board and the public. And your consultants, to some extent, they'll make recommendations, of course.
And the applicant.
Oh, yes, yes, the applicant.
Thank you.
Anyone else who would? Ron, any comments?
I just want to ask one question.
Yes.
I got this, I was given this document last night, this, I went to a training session. And it says that there's something called a conditional negative declaration. What is that?
When you have an unlisted action, you can issue a negative declaration with certain conditions imposed, saying if they do this, that, and the third thing, as opposed to them, the applicant having voluntarily incorporated it into his project, negative declaration can issue. You cannot issue a conditional negative declaration on a type-one action. I believe this is a type-one action.
Thank you.
Ron, anything?
Well, Stephen Graham have indicated, there's a significant body of information you have on this project that relates to every, every aspect of environmental concern that's been raised to date, most recently, just in the last few days. It's my understanding that the applicant has made the effort to respond to every public comment or comment raised by the Conservation Board in a few different technical documents that could range 100 or 150 pages that you've just, just received. So I think as the chairman indicated, it's appropriate to move forward with the public hearing tonight, but you really want to absorb the information that you've just been provided with. It could relate to many of the concerns you may still have before you consider making a SECRAS declaration.
Okay. Is there any other comments from the board, or anyone?
The only thing I'd say, Andy, is, you know, look, and it's up to you, of course, but I would suggest you've been given quite a bit, oof, more to digest, and if you're in a position to close the public hearing tonight, that's, that's all well and good, but I would think that you'd want to digest things before you're ready to move forward with a SECRAS declaration.
Okay. If there's no further comments, we'll close this workshop. And what we'll do, change the, modify the agenda, we're going to continue on with, although we had an item number four, continuing the public hearing on Hudson Reserve, Hudson Highlands Reserve. We'll continue with that, then we'll go on to the rest of the agenda. But first, please join us in the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I had a, I had an agenda here. Okay, here it is. I'm sorry. Yeah. Anybody wants to speak, and anyone who has spoken before, please refrain, we're just going to take new comments, so. Name and address, please.
No, no. This has been given its due.
Tara, you want to take, take the roll, please?
Sure.
Yeah, who's here? Yeah, tell, anybody that's not here, speak up.
That'll do it.
Gotcha. All right, you go ahead, will you?
David Hardy?
Here.
Peter Lewis?
Here.
Kim Connor?
Here.
Neil Zuckerman?
Here.
Dennis Gagnon?
Here.
Neil Toman?
Here.
Andy Moranti?
Here. We have the minutes from last month's meeting. Have you had a chance to look at them?
David pointed out something.
Okay, David, do you have?
He pointed it out to me, right?
Okay. Thank you.
I have one.
Go ahead, Kim.
Nothing, just tech, typos. Just, there's one comment in here where it seems like it got cut off, and I think it was from Julia Fongularo.
Was that included in the minutes from last month? Because I got a letter from her late today.
No, I think it was in here, but now I can't find it. Let's see. I think she started at the beginning. I'm sorry to take everybody's time. Oh, it says, in the end of the sentence, it says, "If it is sustainable for all the residents who rely on that water, thank." And I don't know what that means, so. And then the only other thing is that.
It was supposed to end at water, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay. And the only other thing is that Ulmar, not that spelling counts, but Ulmar spelled U-L-M-A-R. That ends my obsession, okay.
Okay. Move to adopt minutes from February?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. One quickie before we get into the Hudson Highlands Reserve. Olspan asked for a return of escrow. I think we have a letter from Building Department saying that, no, I'm sorry, there are no, there are no fees or anything that they owe, so. Ron, any questions, any comments on Olspan?
No, we have nothing more.
Move to a return escrow, to Olspan? Anyone?
I'll make the motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, we'll continue with the public hearing on Hudson Highlands Reserve. Comments from the public, I see two names here that I know spoke up last month, and unless you really have something different, Dave or Andy?
I'll refrain.
Mr. Butenski?
I have something really brief, just addressing something that.
All right, please, brief.
It's very brief. So last meeting, it was mentioned that the impacts that I had brought up about horses weren't relevant because this was a dressage operation. A good friend of mine, Howard Pagoda, purchased a dressage operation a number of years ago from somebody who had been using it for such. From the time he purchased it, he had never used, there's never been a dressage horse on that operation since he purchased it. He uses it for other types of horses. So I just want to say that, you know, everybody comes up with their projects and says it's only going to be used by little old ladies on Sundays. But we don't know, I don't doubt that the applicant is sincere in how he's going to use it, but if, if it is built, a horse operation is built, then a horse operation will probably always be there, but it won't necessarily always be a dressage operation. And I think that the concerns that I brought up regarding that are still valid, no matter how this applicant uses them. how this applicant uses them. The other, the other thing I just want to say is, if it does go through, I saw that it was, that construction would be done there six days a week. On Saturdays, it would be a shorter day, and I would just ask that outside construction not be done on Saturdays. That's it.
Nora Hart, is it? No, okay. Nancy Burner?
Good evening. My name is Nancy Burner. I'm the Chair of the Hudson Highlands Land Trust. I'm going to read this because I just wanted to keep it short and make sure I made my points. As many of you in this room know, we've been part of the discussion of this development for the past four years. We've written letters explaining our concerns at every turn. And in fact, we've been an important player in discussions about development in the town since we first organized the Phillips Town 2020 forums that preceded the work on writing and adopting our comprehensive plan in 2007. The mission of the land trust is to preserve and protect the natural resources, scenic beauty, and rural character of the Hudson Highlands. No small task, but one we know we share with the larger community, which has shown over and over again that it values the importance of our extraordinary Highlands landscape. In taking on this task, we honor the legacy of all the conservation efforts that have come before us. We take our mission very seriously and believe that we protect and preserve land and vital resources such as water, not just for those of us who are lucky enough to live here now, but for future generations. We could not do this without the extremely hard work that goes on in this planning board, the Conservation Advisory Board, the zoning board, and our town board, and by our citizens. I wish I were proudly standing here tonight, accepting the first conservation easement on our town's first conservation subdivision on behalf of the Hudson Highlands Land Trust. However, as we've already told the board, as the project stands today, it does not meet the standards for an acceptable conservation easement. And in fact, it sets a dangerous precedent for prospective developments. But it doesn't have to be this way. We could still have an outcome that we would all be proud to be part of. The planning board, the developer, and the community, if changes are made to the site plan. Namely, removing the houses that ring the pond and thus preserving the most environmentally sensitive part of the property, and reducing the scale of the equestrian facility and the number of horses involved, which has not been adequately addressed. If these changes are made, HHLT would be willing to reconsider taking the easement. If these changes are not made, we ask for you to give the project a positive declaration so that the conservation aspects can be fully considered. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next two people indicated they're, I'm assuming, speaking for HHLT. And since we had Michelle Smith and Ms. Bernard, I'll just give now what I consider the land trust's opinion on this whole project. I would like to ask Ms. Doyle, Ms. Wharton, is it? Are you speaking for yourself or speaking for the land trust? Because I think we've... Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
You are?
Land trust.
Yeah.
Just briefly.
Okay. Brief, yes, brief.
Very brief. Karen Doyle, I'm the Manager of Public Policy and Planning for the Hudson Highlands Land Trust. My, my comment is just about, I think today we received a very lengthy document from the applicant in response to the Conservation Advisory Board's comments. And we, at the land trust, agree with the Conservation Advisory Board's comments, and we are respectfully requesting a reasonable amount of time to review carefully the comment, the papers that we got today, and, and give us an opportunity and the Conservation Advisory Board an opportunity to respond to those, to those submissions that we got today. And yes, we do have another land trust member who would like to just say a few words. Thank you.
Ms. Wharton, is it?
Hello, my name is Nicole Wooten. I'm the Conservation Stewardship Manager with Hudson Highlands Land Trust.
Your title again?
Conservation Stewardship Manager with Hudson Highlands Land Trust. This is the first time I've stood before you, also, just to give you a little background on my credentials. I also have a Master's of Environmental Management from the Yale School of Forestry. I'm on the Board Committee of the Adirondack's Tailgating Connectivity Corridor, on the Board of the Society for Wilderness Stewardship, and on the Beacon Conservation Advisory Council. So I'm speaking from the point of view of Hudson Highlands Land Trust today, but that's some of my background. These are some very preliminary comments. I just saw this for the first time about half an hour ago. So just from a quick basis, I have significant concerns to some of the base assumptions that are put forth in the, especially the response to the letter reports. Primarily, the relative levels of fragmentation and the scale of importance of this property in relation to the rest of the properties in Phillips Town, I think, is under assessed. Also, I believe the wording around fragmentation and some of the different ideas presented are based on certain outdated assumptions. I believe the idea here is fairly simple. This development covers a large portion of undeveloped land, as it is proposed, and renders the gaps among the developed areas primarily useless to wildlife. And by breaking the land into smaller parts, it is effectively breaking apart the, the important habitat areas of this land. So from a forest habitat to a water habitat is extremely important as far as connectivity for larger mammals, smaller mammals, reptiles. So also, in relation specifically to Dr. Margaret Conroy's paper, it doesn't address water, which is Hudson Highlands Land Trust's primary concern. As you will notice in the exhibits, the pond, wetlands, and hydro soils are not in the maps. It bases the idea of fragmentation primarily on vegetation, ignoring topography, which is vital to understanding the flow of pollutants and immediate and lingering effects of disturbance. Oops. And also, I'm the ARC GIS Analyst for our office, and this particular study is based on one shapefile, one idea of how one can measure fragmentation across the landscape, which it points out in the paper is a flawed data set. So it's not producing any new information. And over two-thirds of the studies that are cited within that paper were done over a decade ago. There are many new concepts around the idea of fragmentation connectivity that have been put forth since then. That's mostly just based on fragmentation. I have many other thoughts that came up, especially around the equestrian facility, but those have already been mentioned by my colleagues.
It's a long half hour, it's been.
It has.
Little activity.
Well, I, I looked at it for a half an hour and then have been thinking on the drive over. But in summary, these are my preliminary reflections. But after consideration from my professional and academic experience, it's my opinion that on multiple grounds, it's inconceivable that a project, as it stands, as you can see on the board, would not have a significant detrimental effect on the natural resources and conservation values of these lands. Thank you.
Thank you. Is this Emily Duncan? Did she, did she not speak before?
No.
Okay.
Hi, guys. I've been, I was unable to come to any of the other meetings. I did watch them on TV, though, and one point that was raised, that I never heard the developer address, was that this is being marketed as a, as weekend homes, but is there any way to make that official? Can you tell someone who spends millions of dollars on a house?
This was definitely mentioned several times.
But I never heard the, the answer. Is there a way to tell people that you can't live in this house that you spent millions of dollars on? Because half the people I know in town came here as weekenders and live here full-time now. So there isn't, right?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Cynthia Kling, is it?
My question has been addressed.
Did you come up there? Sorry?
My question has been addressed.
Okay, fine, thank you. Glenn. Some of the speakers mentioned that you did, and your consultants mentioned that you did get two rather lengthy documents to go over. And I just wanted to touch on some of the highlights and tell you what we did and introduce one more speaker. First of all, we did compile the comments that were made at the last two sessions of the public hearing, and we did provide responses to, to them. Essentially, virtually all of them were somehow previously addressed. There were traffic issues on East Mountain Road, there were some, and there were traffic issues that, we have this study, and... But the one thing where, where we did find some, we did have some very positive feedback is, and I want to point that out too, is the fire company that you mentioned before. Fire company essentially made four distinct recommendations. They wanted to know about the dry hydrant, they want to know about whether we consider the dry hydrant system, or whether we consider tanks on the property. They stressed the possibility of sprinkling the houses, and they, they talked about the strength of the roads, and one of, and subsequently followed up with a letter, and there was one other, they, oh, gates, and there was one other, oh, yeah, they asked us if we'd buy them a fire truck. So... It's a hook and ladder, right? So we did, we, you know, we talked about every single one of them. And, and, but what we, what we, what we have built into that, and we've left the door open a little bit for further discussion as the plan develops, but we, we had already talked about gating the road. They suggested a lock box, we call it a Knox box, but essentially, I think it's like the brokers put on your front door, so they, they know how to get into it. And that, obviously, you know, even I'd pay for that. So, so, and they asked, they asked, they said, they said it would be very important to sprinkle the houses. So we made a commitment in this new paper that you have to, to sprinkle all the buildings, including the barn. Yeah, sure.
Glenn, there's been a couple of comments tonight about the, the voluminous submissions since the last couple of days. Is there anything in there that is additional to what's already been submitted in the Part III EAF?
Yeah.
Beyond the fire department topics you've listed?
Yes, I was going to touch it. And I think that's, in terms of our response to the public comments, I think that's the only substantive thing that, that precipitated a, an additional mitigating factor, and that's the fire company.
So then it sounds like the answer is no, that there's...
Not in that one. That's in the one document.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Which one of the two, then, are you talking about?
The one I've been talking about is the public comments one, that one, the one in your left hand.
Okay, one's tied to comments and one's tied to letters.
Yeah, but this one says, "The Conservation..."
Oh, letters, to letters, report, letter reports of the, okay.
Okay. The Conservation Board was, had basically six points, and I can remember five of them. Oh, I just wanted to tell you about the other things with the fire company. We eliminated the dry hydrant for, for two reasons. One practical reason is that in order to make that work, we would have to build a road down to the lake and invest, and pump the water up, and, and that would be, for other reasons, be detrimental to the protection of the lake. So, so we, that was with the firehouse, we talked about that. And commenting on that, I know I see the North Highlands Fire Company periodically come over to Glassbury Court, and there's a road that goes right up to the dry hydrant. I can see them pumping to see if they still have the pressure and so forth. So I know what you're talking about there. Push water further than you can pull it. Right. That's what it boils down to. Right. So in turning to the comments that you received from the Conservation Board, we prepared a preliminary SWIP, which provides calculations, it provides, there's a map that provides, shows where we're going to, we're tentatively where we're going to treat the storm water, how we're going to convey the storm water, what we're going to do in terms of mitigations in that treatment, what, what proportion of the storm water would be, would be infiltrated, reasons why we're... They, they essentially said that we shouldn't put any pipe from a stormwater pipe into, into any of the, any of the resources, meaning we assume that meant the lake, the pond and Clove Creek. Well, we couldn't agree with that because we, we have to put it somewhere. And it's the only place it can go unless we build a lake, and then, of course, that would be a resource that we'd have to regulate. So we're, it's a catch-and-twenty-two situation. Road, we did, we did, on that same plan, we did provide phase, five-acre phasing of the construction with regard to the SWIP. We did talk extensively about the septic system, which they questioned, and we did talk extensively about the lake. We reiterated our commitments with regard to the lake and the mitigations that were offered there. We went back to our lake consultant and, and had him review our plan in terms of the build-out, which, and comment upon that, and that's attached there. So I did want to mention that I think that the, I think that the comments in, in the EAF regarding water supply were based on Chasen's, Chasen's later aquifer study. After the Miller study? Yeah, I think, well, that was quite a bit later. Yeah. So the only other thing is, the commitment that was added in, in the Conservation Board was a commitment to native species. I'm going to ask Steve Miller to introduce Dr. Conroy, who's here.
Not Miller. It's going to be Steve Miller. It's a good band.
I knew I'd get one of these days. I'm sorry, Steve Gross. So to, to introduce you, introduce Margaret Conroy, and hopefully you'll, you'll see that those things are, put a cap on pretty much every question that you've had. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Miller?
I used to work for Tim Miller, but, you know. You, this board, and especially the Conservation Board, has heard me mention Rick Lathrop on several occasions when the question of fragmentation came up. Rick is a professor at Rutgers University who has been working on the issue of fragmentation for more than 20 years. And I called Rick and asked him if he would like to weigh in on this, and he told me that he didn't have availability to do that. And he recommended to me someone who had studied and worked with him, that he had his full faith in, who received her PhD under Rick's guidance. That's, you have her, her report now, Dr. Margaret Conroy. And Dr. Conroy actually lives outside Dover, Delaware, and drove all the way up here tonight, a four-hour drive. Is going to drive four hours back again tonight. So we're hoping that you'd be very willing to listen after all that driving to what she has to say and what the results were of, of her study. Margaret?
Hi. As you said, I'm Margaret Conroy. And my qualifications are, I have a PhD in ecology from Rutgers University. I did do my work under... I did do my work under Dr. Rick Lathrop, and he has, he's worked on fragmentation for a long time. My work with him, I worked with him since about 2010 through now. My work with him and my work on my own has been on threatened and endangered species, habitat, and the fragmentation, and how to mitigate that fragmentation, specifically in the state of New Jersey. The state is looking into implementing our plan right now to assist with that. Further qualifications, I was on the change, mapping committee, CHANGE stands for Connecting Habitat Across New Jersey, and for about five years, so I've been working on connecting habitat there as well. I was asked to assess the impact of the Hudson Highlands Reserve on forest fragmentation, I did a, an independent review, so actually this huge binder I never read, so if I repeat things, that's why. Let's come...
May I interject? That was by design. Margaret asked me to supply her things that I had written already, and I said, "I don't want to influence you, I don't want to lead you, I want you to do your own independent analysis." And so, she was not provided anything that I had written. She was provided with the conservation board has written, but not anything I had written.
Before you continue, do you have a report that you'll submit?
You got it.
That's the one, okay, that's the one we got tonight, okay.
You do have a sentence that says, "I have received copious amounts of information from Steve Gross."
Yes, I did. I did receive information on the project in terms...
But not my opinion.
Okay.
In terms of answering questions of what will be, yeah, it's in the data sources, yeah. What will be, you know, I received this plan, of course, I received a lot of layers, yeah. And I did ask a lot of questions, but I have not read, read the material. So...
You're back here.
I'm here.
Okay, sorry, I'll get closer. So, first you need to understand that, that most connectivity and looking at fragmentation potential is looking on a landscape level. So, here on a landscape level, you will notice that the Hudson Highlands Reserve is part of a forest fragment. So, this fragment is surrounded completely by roads which fragment that, and most of those, or all of those roads, have some development on them in terms of homes or businesses. You know, looking a little further, we've got the unfragmented forest in Farnstock, and that is surrounded by these other fragmented forests around it, which are very useful for different species, you know, so we, we don't want to minimize that. In looking at this, I did use an older study as a basis because it was a seminal study, and it was used to set up Sterling State Forest. And that was, that work was done back in 1998, and I, I can address things that have happened since then as well. But I use this because, especially from a public policy aspect, it's important to know what has been accepted, not just what has been published by professors and not actually accepted in public policy. So, the Sterling analysis looked at a, a simple measure, so that was distance from already developed land. And broke things into either very slight, slight, moderate, severe, or very severe environmental limitation rankings. Or, they were also called forest fragmentation potential, and then they looked at several different measures and came up with an environmental limitation ranking. And you can look this up, it's published sources, publicly available. And looking at the Hudson Highlands Reserve from that, one of the most important things to remember is that it's right next to Route 9, which is a major barrier for many species. It's a barrier for crossing, the noise is, is an issue, the pollution coming from that as well. And so, looking at that, looking at the distance from Route 9 and from some of the surrounding roads, we find that, under this measure, 63% of the developed areas, so, in, in the HHR, would fall under a very slight, have a very slight forest fragmentation potential. And 37 would fall under slight. None of it falls into moderate, severe, or very severe. But further, as I said, we were, you know, I started with the seminal study that was older. We looked at some of what's been, you know, done since then in terms of the science of fragmentation, or non-fragmentation. And something that's very important is the actual, sometimes in the past, fragmentation was talked about, anything that would increase the edge habitat. So, for certain species, they like to be on the edge of a forest, certain ones like to be in the core. Well, the ones on the edge, we're not really having issues with them. They have more habitat when we move into areas, not less. So those usually don't tend to become the threatened or endangered species. The threatened or endangered species, or the species that are at risk, are those that like the core, the interior. So anything that increases that edge habitat, you know, can be thought of as, as a negative. And that's one way of looking at fragmentation, but there's also the connectivity. And in our case, they've, they've done what they can to make connections. So even though, you know, we have this, the large area here that is preserved, we do have a connection through, to the water. We do have connections among the areas. Of course, anytime you develop, you're gonna have a loss of habitat. And that is something that has been dealt with in different states, different ways. One of the, one of the main theories behind that is looking at, we'd love to have no net loss of habitat, right? But anytime we build something, there's going to be a loss of habitat. So they've looked at no net loss of habitat value. So what can we do through the remaining habitat to increase the value, to offset a lowering of value in the, in the developed areas? And that's where preserving is gonna keep that habitat there forever. If this area weren't preserved, whatever it's known for could happen to it. So by preserving it, we're adding value to that. So even though, any, you know, anytime you build, you're gonna be losing value in this particular area, habitat value, you're gaining it by preserving. So we have to look at the offset there. Another issue that's very important in fragmentation and in connectivity is that there have been many studies done recently that show that the quality of the matrix, the matrix is the developed portion between, you know, the habitat areas, is very important. And a high-quality matrix can lessen the impact of any fragmentation. In this case, in the Hudson Highland Reserve, there are several things that are being, being done to increase the quality of that matrix, and I believe one of the most important is to plant native plantings. So this habitat will no longer be forest where it's taken out around the houses, but with native plantings, it should become habitat for native species. And then another important thing to keep in mind is just the scale, the scale of the habitat lost, or the perforation, the area that is now taken out of what used to be forest in that area. So the scale of it is, you know, 154 acres out of 210 are gonna be in a conservation easement. And then of the remaining, I believe, 9.9 acres are gonna be impervious. So those will be a, you know, total loss of habitat, but then the 33.7 acres that is gonna be landscaped, or meadows, if it's landscaped and native plants, meadows, it should become habitat for some of those, you know, meadow and edge species, so. These are my comments, I don't know if, if there are questions from you guys.
No, it's, it's more reading that we're gonna have to do to get into it, so, thank you for that.
Can I ask you one question?
Sure.
Did you visit the property?
Yes. It's beautiful, I have to say.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? We should think about closing the public hearing?
The only thing I'd say, that is, of course, completely the board's decision, but you've received requests to submit additional documents, Hudson Highland Land Trust, and I think the conservation board would like to. The board could close a public hearing.
And enter those...
You could keep it open, or you could close it except for receiving those two documents.
Right.
So you could close it except for written comments from anybody within, I don't know, two weeks, 30 days, whatever it is you think's appropriate.
Well, I had every intention of allowing written comments to continue.
Sorry.
No, no, I mean, it's fine, just to remind me of it, and the two documents you're talking about.
Let me fill in that point you just said.
Go ahead.
We heard HHLT suggest they want to submit comments because their chair stood here. I don't, I see Andy in the back. Do we expect also the conservation board to also make comments based on the comments? Okay.
Yeah, well, we'll check that into the record. And we will get them for review, each member will get them for review as well, so. Any other comments before we move on? Graham?
If I may, Mr. Chairman. We have absolutely no objection for closing the public hearing to oral comment. We've, we've had three or four sessions of that. We have no objection to it remaining open for written comment either. I just would respectfully request that the period be 20 days, so...
Well, I sort of was assuming till next month's meeting.
I, I have a thought on that. I'm just worried that if we keep it open till the next month's meeting, we'll be inundated at the last minute with other materials which will cause the board to say, "Well, we've just received this." I, I would suggest that you set a date, 15 to 20 days, no more, to allow the board time before the next meeting to digest that material so that you can...
Well, yeah, we, we did have any way built into this, receiving information no later than...
This is the end of the meeting, do you want to say, I don't know, two weeks?
Well, we got two weeks.
This is the normal deadline for submissions and stuff.
Well, that's, how many days before the next meeting? 10 days?
Yeah, it's two weeks, exactly.
So why don't we just settle for two weeks, make it easy?
And what will the limit be on receiving comments from the applicant? Because we got comments, you know, 24 hours ago, basically, and, you know, that...
No, they would, they would have the ability to submit their final comments within the 15 to 20 days, whatever, as would everybody else. We have to, we have to call it quits at a certain point because ultimately we'll get into this endless cycle of responses to comments.
My point is simply that, Chris, it's very hard for us to respond to the applicant if we have 24 hours.
Well, the public hearing is open, so that's why, of course, we, we availed ourselves of the opportunity, it's our property, to respond during the public hearing process. So, I don't see how that would be objectionable.
Right. I think you need to understand, there's a difference between the applicant and the public. The public hearing is to receive comments from the public. The applicant can submit things after, and right up to, now, if he submits them at the last minute, you may say, "I'm not gonna consider them at this meeting."
Well, we don't have time to...
That's fine, but you can't tell the applicant, "You got two weeks to submit, or I'm not gonna consider..."
No, that's what I'm talking about, I'm just, you know. It's hard to...
Well, then we should distinguish, there's a public comment period after the closing.
Right. Well, look, if they want to submit it as part of the pub, the public hearing, God bless them, they got two weeks on that, but they still have a right to submit it as the applicant separately apart from...
Right. But it is... I'm sorry, I'm just, I don't want to belabor this too much, but it's just, you know, if it's the night before the meeting, we cannot be expected to have gone through it.
No, we won't. A lot of planning boards say, "If you do not have this to us 15 days before our meeting, we're not gonna consider it at the meeting."
Normally, we have a 10-day...
No, we're more late than...
10-day prior cutoff.
Could we say if, if you're gonna maintain a two-week comment period for the general public, then the applicant has a week beyond that to, to respond, so that's one meeting...
Normally, they would have 10 days prior to the next meeting anyway. Steve?
Excuse me. Could I just request an additional week or 30 days? You know, I don't think two weeks is gonna be enough time.
Well, four years and two weeks, yeah, enough.
We had...
Two months, we've had two months, sorry.
Request a 30-day period.
We had two weeks.
Excuse me, we've had two months for comments already.
No, I mean, in response to the packet that you received today.
More than the public, it is pretty thick. I mean, it's not really gonna make, you know, make a difference.
But 30 days is...
Yeah, but that's it, 30 days, and then we're done.
For public comment.
Yeah.
Can I make a comment on behalf of the conservation board?
Okay.
We're not gonna have a meeting until... We are, behalf of the conservation board, we are not having a meeting till the 10th of April. So we need time also to review these documents. Thank you.
Meeting was canceled, so they're meeting here, you guys are meeting here.
And where are they meeting?
The conservation board is meeting the 10, April 10, and then you guys meet the 19.
Yeah. We've been at it for four years. We've had the public hearing open for over three, three and a half months. We've had ample opportunity. The comments that we responded to were comments we just received, and so that's why we responded as part of the public hearing process. That's what we did. Now, those comments have been submitted, obviously, we did not, I mean, 20 days, 30 days? With all due respect, speak, secrets supposed to be moved along in, in an expeditious basis. We're into it for four years. It strikes me as respectfully for us to have a period of 20 days for public comment. If you want to make an exception with respect to the Conservation Advisory Board because of when it meets, that's understandable.
Well, that's the one thing I was gonna say, since Secretary said it...
But I would just suggest that there has to be some finality to the process.
I agree.
Is the conservation board even subject? Is there an agency, an advisory agency to the board? So I wouldn't think they're subject to the public hearing, closing the public hearing. They can, they can provide comment to the, to the board at any time.
Well, I would think so, especially since the fact that they have a meeting that, this month's meeting is canceled, so I would grant them...
Don't we want to hear from them before we make a secret determination?
Yes, we do.
You know, so, you know, that's regardless of the public hearing.
You fight over 10 days. You fight over 10 days.
Yeah, I know, I know. Okay, give us the scenario, Steve, on the scheduling here.
Well, I mean, you, you can close, you can hold the public hearing open if you have a mind to, because you did just receive this fragmentation information now. You can close a public hearing altogether and say, "That's it as far as the public goes." You can close a public hearing except for the CB and the Hudson Highland Land Trust, or you can keep it open for everybody for either 20 or 30 days, it's up to you, what time period. That's pretty much it, and I suppose you could get into other permutations if you want, 20 days for the general public and 30 days for Hudson Highland Land Trust. But I mean, you know, I'd just keep it open for 30 days, there's an end to it. That's it, that's it, no more...
All right, any sense of the board?
I'll make a motion to keep it open for 30 days.
Just for written comments?
For written comments.
Second?
I'll second that.
Discussion? Neil?
The only thing I'd say is, our advisors continually talk about more information, SWIP analysis, septic, and lake and mitigation of the lake, which are reinforcing of the existing plan and the plan being unchanged. More information, more information. At some point, we, we can only read so much more about the same plan, and it's the same plan that we're opining about. It has more information about the same plan, but it's still the same plan. And so, there's a point where my Harvard Business School MBA and West Point degree will, there's nothing more you can tell me that I'm gonna be able to learn about a SWIP until I go become an engineer. So, I, I am at a place personally where any more explanation of it, any more detail about whatever the name of the forest fragmentation study is gonna be, I'm not gonna be able to interpret it anymore. You could put me in a PhD class on astronomy now and stick me in front of it, I am not gonna go to the moon, no matter how much more. So at some point, because I know what's gonna happen is the conservation sub, conservation board's gonna write a paper, and then these guys are gonna wanna write a paper about the paper, and it's gonna be more commentary about the exact same plan that is unchanged. So at some point, and I asked this last time, we're gonna have to call for a, for a discussion and an answer about what we think of this. And again, I don't know about my colleagues, I'm not gonna, there's a point where I can't learn anymore about this. I'm, my capacity has been, is reaching its end. And that's not, that's not a willingness, that's not a will issue, that's a skill issue. Because I'm a layman, I'm a board member appointed as a layman, not as an expert. If you want experts on this board, we can have, your, Grant, Grahams, we can have all Grahams on this board, but we're not. A frightened concept, indeed, because you don't even live here. A frightened concept indeed, because you don't even live here.
Just to, to a point, I see where Neil's coming from. I felt the same way reading the response from the applicant to the, all the public comments, I think it was all 42 pages. After the first eight or nine or 10 pages, the questions started being repetitive, and so I started skipping page after page. I wound up starting, re-reviewing it at page 38, you know. So I think, to take Neil's point, I think, you know, it gets saturated, and we lose sight of the whole, the main discussion. So, there's a motion on the floor. Did we get a second for that?
Yes, we just didn't vote.
Okay. We'll vote, David. How do you vote?
What am I voting for?
See, there we go, that's fine case.
Do you want to close a public hearing except for public comments, which will be received, accepted for another 30 days?
For 30 days.
Oh, yeah. I vote for that, yes.
Peter?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Aye.
And I do vote, I vote aye. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is the public hearing still held open?
No, that's the next...
And not only for 30 days.
Now, we're gonna, we're gonna close.
For clarification purposes, the public hearings closed for oral comment, you're accepting written comments for 30 days from tonight.
30 days for written comment. Now, we need a motion.
Public hearings close for anything except for written comments.
Yes.
It will only be accepted for another 30 days.
Right. Thank you.
I just want to make a personal apology to Chairman Moranti.
Wait a minute, Steve.
Oh.
We're done.
Oh.
I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
They did. They did. They did.
That's done.
Yes, it's closed.
Okay, and a comment will continue for 30 days.
Written comment.
Written comment, written comment.
30 days.
We've reached the saturation level, he's right.
Can we create a page limit?
That's a good idea. I had a CEO client who did, 10 pages max, right?
I'll tell ya, that's what happened to me after the first eight pages, I could've got rid of the next 25.
All right. You take five minutes, you should disappear, right?
No, I'm not gonna.
Sure?
Yeah, I'm all right. You can just push me off the chair.
You got a great ass.
No, no. Well, wait a minute, what do we got left? Got Surprise Lake.
Taking a break.
Yeah, we're taking a break, obviously.
All right, so we're gonna continue with our agenda. Andy Moranti has stepped out. So we're gonna, the first thing on the agenda is the Robert Miller Altech Service Center, which has been withdrawn, so we're not gonna have a public hearing on that tonight. The second public hearing on this list is for Surprise Lake Camp, and I'm gonna ask Tara to read the statement.
The Phillips Town Planning Board for the town of Phillips Town, New York, will hold a public hearing on Thursday, March 15, 2018, starting at 7:30 PM at the old VFW Hall, 34 Kemble Avenue in Cold Spring, New York, to consider the following application. Surprise Lake Camp, the application proposes various site improvements within the 465-acre parcel in the vicinity of the administrative building and lakeshore to improve vehicular circulation, pedestrian camper safety, as well as reconfigure the existing walking paths to improve site circulation. No new structures or additions are proposed. The property is situated at the end of Lake Surprise Road in an IC Institutional Conservation zoning district in the town of Phillips Town, tax map number 27 dot dash one dash 1.1. At said hearing, all persons will have the right to be heard. Copies of the application, plat map, and other related materials may be seen in the office of the Planning Board at the Phillips Town Town Hall, dated at Phillips Town, New York, this 23rd day of February, 2018. Andy Moranti, Chairman.
Thank you, Tara. So, I think we'll ask you to address us about this project.
Okay, I'll give you a brief presentation. My name is Rich Williams, I'm with Insight Engineering, we're the site civil engineers for the project. Also here with me this evening is Cheryl Kirschenbaum, who is the camp director. We are before you this evening for a major site plan approval. We've been before the Conservation Board, who's granted us a conditional wetland permit, and before we were done, we also need to obtain coverage under the New York State DEC Speedway General Permit for stormwater discharges from construction activities. As Tara indicated, we are before you seeking a series of site improvements. There are no buildings nor building additions proposed, nor an increase in the intensity of use proposed with this application. The site improvements that we're proposing are really to address some existing issues, concerns, and upgrades to the camp facility. Primarily, we want to improve some camper safety by separating an area where the children happen to congregate around vehicles. As an ongoing mission of Surprise Lake Camp, we're seeking to preserve the quality of Lake Surprise. There are some ongoing erosion control issues and maintenance of existing roads that we want to address, and as part of the camp's ongoing mission, we want to improve the aesthetic quality and recreation experience for the campers themselves. As Tara mentioned, we're located at 382 Lake Surprise Road. It's approximately a 465-acre parcel in the northwest corner of the town of Phillips Town. We sit just south of the county line. We are surrounded by the Hudson Highland State Park, and we are in the IC zone. The series of improvements we're gonna be talking about are located centrally in the camp. This aerial map here, with north being up, is an overall map of the camp. You can see Lake Surprise in the center of the camp, and we're gonna be looking at the areas just east of the lake. We're gonna move to an enlarged plan. So, looking at the enlarged plan, you can see on the left-hand side of the page, the eastern edge of Lake Surprise, here we have the main camp building. In and around that main camp building, we're seeking to solve a couple of problems. Right now, this area in front of the building happens to be a main congregational area for the children because the dining hall's here, there's an auditorium, other facilities are here. It's also the main parking lot for visitors, delivery trucks, and anyone coming to the camp. So what we're seeking to do is construct a visitor parking lot so that we can separate visitors from that congregational area. We're also looking at paving the access road, or a portion of the access road alongside the main building where the slope is steep and it's continually eroding. Between the main building and the lake, there's a series of improvements. One, we want to improve the aesthetics right in front of the building, expand some green space, change some seating areas. We also want to remove some invasive species that exist along a steep slope, stabilize the slope by creating a series of tiered sitting walls, so that we can create an amphitheater style seating that overlooks the lake, that can be used by the campers on a daily basis. There are a series of grading improvements adjacent to the lake. This is one of the reasons we had to go for a wetland permit before the Conservation Board. We are increasing the fringe plantings as part of mitigation for some of the buffer disturbances at the request of the Conservation Board. We're also installing stormwater, which will treat not only the changes in impervious, but existing impervious surfaces in that lower lawn area. That summarizes the improvements in front of the building. Behind the building, we have one improvement, which is to the lower access road. This is the second part of our plan to separate the vehicles from the children. Right now, delivery trucks come to this main parking area in front of the building. By widening the existing lower access road and creating a hammerhead turnaround, we're gonna be able to focus deliveries to the rear of the building and basically create this area in the front as a pedestrian-only area. That's our proposal, and we're here to answer any questions you or the public may have.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Anything to say, Ron?
Well, the board's seen this proposal before. I think you've accomplished a site inspection of the property previously. As the applicant's engineer indicates, the Conservation Board is, stands ready to issue a wetlands permit for the activity. Necessary environmental referrals have just recently gone out. They will not be returnable until your April meeting. And you've also recently received comments from the North Highland Fire Department, which have been referred to the applicant's engineer for response as well. So to the purpose of tonight, it's just to conduct a public hearing on the application.
Okay, so, at this point, is there anyone here who would like to speak from the public about this project? No? Okay.
I'm moving forward to public hearing. I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is closed, so what remains?
Yeah, if I can address the board with our next steps.
Yep.
For the April meeting, we would like to respond to the outstanding engineering comments, as well as to the comments received by the Phillips Town, North Highland Fire District. Our goal, just to talk about big picture timeline, would be to try and construct the lower access road improvements before camp starts in late June. The window we have to do that is quickly closing, and the weather's not helping. But if the board is okay and we do a good job with our responses, is it possible to have a draft resolution prepared to discuss at the April meeting? Again, pending us doing our job on resubmitting.
Seems, anybody have an objection to that?
I guess the only question would be, how much time are you gonna need to respond to Ron's comments?
We're planning on...
No, we don't go through what we've just gone through, we get it the day of the meeting.
We've been in touch with Tara. I believe the submission for the April meeting is April 5, and our plan would be to submit by, our plan would be to submit by your submission deadline.
And the typical process that's used, once this comes towards the, the end of the review process, is I'll work directly with the design engineer, so that the next submitter that comes in should be clean from a technical perspective. We just have to await any comments that might come from the environmental circulation.
Neil?
I generally am opposed to this signaling of intent. We do this often as this board. Glenn asks us, you've asked us. I'm empathetic to your plight, given that the narrow window of your business is one that's very seasonal and otherwise has no value during the rest of the year, of limited value for alumni and other things, so I would make a rare exception. I feel like I'm stating this simply for the record, that I do not like that we get often asked, and generally am opposed to, signaling intention ahead of actually having fact to make a judgment call. So I just want to state that clearly.
Generally speaking, what we say is that they're prepared if we want to use them, but we, they aren't, we don't necessarily have to approve them at that meeting, it's just that they're ready in case. But we could equally, you know, do that at the, at the meeting and have...
That's right. The deal is, and I don't want to be crass about it, but the applicant pays for the preparation of the resolutions, and if the applicant asks to have a resolution prepared that the board can't use, it's on their dime. The other thing is, Neil rightly points out, this is not the usual practice of this planning board. Our, the practice and procedure is to make a determination, you know, and then have Ron, you know, prepare them for consideration. It's only when you look at the plan and it's like, there's not any, not much that's gonna change on that. You're really not in a situation where you're asking Ron to draft something that you're gonna be caroting in a lot of things. And if you have one like that, that's kind of a ground ball, then you might consider it, but if it's something more, you're not probably gonna do that.
That's how I personally feel about this, so I'm willing to be, I'm okay with this particular one, but I just, we get this asked a lot, and I don't love it.
No, it's a good thing to put on record.
Okay. Pat said, would someone like to make the motion to have Ron prepare those items for the April meeting?
Make that an approval resolution. I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Moving right along.
Moving right along. All right. So, now we're gonna go to old business, and the first thing on that list is SEJE Realty LLC, 1510 Route 9 in Garrison, minor site plan.
Then we have prepared.
Right, and we want to discuss that, though, I assume. And Mr. Watson is here to tell us about that.
Matt, just a point of order, are we still also doing Jamie Copeland after this? Or is that also, given we, the site plan was canceled, is that...
Site visit was canceled.
So is that, we doing that agenda item or we not after?
We're gonna schedule another site visit.
Okay, so this is the last item in our agenda?
Uh, the board is doing that, yes.
Wait, do we want to do Copeland or not? I just heard about it.
Well, he's, he's not here, and we didn't have a site visit.
Okay. So you don't want to schedule one without him, all right.
We have to schedule another site visit.
Right.
Oh, yeah, we may not have to talk, we have to, do we have to talk to him to schedule a site visit?
We didn't show up the last time.
Right.
He didn't show up.
He didn't show up for the site.
He didn't show up for the last, at the site visit. We went for the site visit, and he didn't show up. Right.
Well, I wouldn't schedule it, though. You don't want to go there and not even show up.
All right, so...
He's off.
So...
Yeah, sorry.
We'll take him off.
I'm just trying to make sure you're the last to go.
Sorry, Glenn. And so, I would like to make a motion to ask Tara to contact Jamie Copeland to figure out what our next step is gonna be, if he's gonna come to our next meeting, you know, check on the status of our...
Motion on that one.
I'm just gonna, it isn't an official motion, it's just I'm stating that for the record. Okay, thank you, Glenn, go ahead.
You had a public hearing last month. I think the most important thing that happened was that you had asked the building inspector to made a compliance inspection. I believe you got that letter tonight. I did take the time to talk, call him, and make, make sure that, that got communicated to him and ask him for the results of it. He found that these two trailers are illegal buildings, and we've modified the plan to say that they would be removed, as I think the purchaser, applicant indicated the last time, that he was willing to do whatever it took, and when I talked to him about it, he authorized me to put this, so we've, so because he's not the, because he's not the owner and can't take any action until he closes and needs your approval, we put it on that he couldn't get a CO for his use until such time as he removed the buildings. Building inspector has given you comments that, that, with regard to the condition of those two buildings. We've gone through Mr. Gainer's comments. I think the only thing I owe him is a detail on the racks for the, for the outside storage. Other than that, I think we addressed, I think we addressed his comments with regard to the SEPTIC system locations off-site, and just made general revisions to the plan, so I did receive a, draft a declaration and approval, and I'm here hoping you'll approve it.
So the only thing, so the letter from the building inspector, I think, included, it says a pair of, item three, have you seen this letter?
I saw it, but to be honest with you, I was concentrating on something else this evening.
Okay. So, it's, he says, "A pair of tractor trailer bodies not appearing road where they are located along eastern border, contents unknown." But he doesn't say anything about removing them, and you've still got them on that plan, correct?
Well, if, that's, my understanding, that came out last meeting, my understanding is that there's actually some charity that keeps their donations in there. If you want them off, we'll take them off.
Well, our, I guess our question was just, you know, are they, do they count as structures on the, on the property? Because that's.
I haven't been there in a couple of months, but aren't they on wheels?
They're on wheels.
They're on wheels. They may not be movable, right? But they shouldn't count as structures. So, if they're on wheels, they shouldn't count as structures.
I don't think so.
Okay.
But you do have a standard note on the drawings that indicate any trailers on the site are to be removed. They're not permitted. What, standard, standard plan condition?
The applicant has no objection to taking that trailer off. But we did, I mean, it's a little bit that, it's outside storage, right? That's, that's the point.
Right.
Yeah, okay. That's fine. That's fine.
Okay. And then the only other piece of Greg's comments here, that raw steel material is being stored along western border facing Route 9 and doesn't appear to be shown on the site plan.
What's that?
Raw steel material.
And now, the, the proposed purchaser of the property has brought steel onto the property. His intention was to store it behind the building, formerly on racks.
Yeah, I'm sure he'll do that. I don't, like I say, I haven't been down there. Okay. We'll move that.
Okay. Neil?
We discussed both at the site visit and last month about making a note that does not allow for painting to ensure that it doesn't get into the water supply. I, my perusal of these 16 items does not have one related to paint. And I remember, I believe, Ron, you're the one who stated that we would have affixed to this plan, there would be, that there would not be painting done to avoid that water issue.
Yeah, and in advance of tonight's meeting, the board got three separate documents from me. One was a technical memorandum to identify the last remaining issues to be resolved, as well as present the current status of the project. And you've got a draft negative secret declaration and a draft, a site plan approval reso. In the technical memorandum, I've summarized all those technical concerns that the board had raised, and specifically were provided to me by Neil, to incorporate sufficient notes to address those concerns. And it was no exterior activities being accomplished, the issue of the protection relative to the painting and use of solvents in the building to prevent groundwater pollution, and to acknowledge that the town's environmental performance standards apply to any activities on the project.
Okay. That first one, you said, no outdoor activities?
No outdoor welding and welding, painting, or steel cutting operations to occur exterior of the building. The applicant had previously said at the public hearing that they would be done interior. You can verify if that's an issue. We, we have to deal with it.
Yeah.
I remember that was the one we discussed.
I don't remember no activities outside. I remember no painting outside.
Those, those specific activities.
Okay.
Welding, painting, or steel cutting.
Still walk.
Well, thank God for that.
Thank God.
We're taking that under advisement.
That's fine. Then, I'm sure.
Yeah, I mean, if the board is exposed, you can, you can move this along tonight. And if, if the applicant has an issue, you'll have to come back.
Right. Okay.
Okay. So, would anyone like to make, does anyone have any additional comments? No? Steve? Any comments? No? Does anyone want to make a motion to the effect, to declare negative, is it, do we do secret first? Do a neg, to, would anyone like to make a motion to adopt an egg deck under secret for this project?
So moved.
Conditioned on.
Just a second. I just would like you to condition, I don't know which one you need the 239 referral back, but it's not been 30 days.
No, we did.
We get it?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna correct that when the board gets to it.
Oh, okay.
I was able to get that in today.
This is, so this, this motion is conditioned on the applicant agreeing to Ron's notes that we just discussed.
Yes.
So, who would like to make that motion?
So moved.
Neil, second. Other Neil. All in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. And then, the next thing we have to do is to adopt, to make a motion to adopt a resolution for site plan.
And if I could speak to that before the board takes an action. There's, there's one whereas on page one of the document that talks about the referral to county planning. My text indicated that the board was still awaiting a written response. I was able to obtain that today from the county, and they have responded that it's approved or submitted. So, I'll correct the text on that whereas, if it's acceptable to the board. And on the, on the second page, on the list of conditions, under item 3A, I talked about receipt of satisfactory response from Putnam County Department of Planning. That obviously can be stricken since it's now in the record. So, those two changes should be considered before you act.
So, in that case, right, would approve, make, someone make a motion to approve the resolution as revised?
I'll make that.
Dennis, second?
I'll second.
Peter, all in favor? I vote aye.
I'm not in favor of that at this moment, because I, I don't feel great about approving things where we have material notes to put on the plan ahead of time. So, I'd like to make sure it's explicit that it's conditional on our engineer observing and ensuring those items are on.
If I could, if I could, if I could speak to the resolution, one of the conditions that I didn't identify is a resolution of all technical issues contained in the town engineer's memorandum dated March 14. And that's the memorandum I was referring to, where we specifically identified those conditions.
So, it's in there?
So, it's covered, yeah.
Well, will be up there.
It's conditioned on all the conditions listed in Ron's technical memo, the first of which is no welding, painting, or steel cutting operations shall be conducted outdoors. Before that gets signed by Andy or Cameron, whoever signs it, Ron is gonna look at it and make sure that that condition is on there, and I'm sure that whoever signs it will as well.
Be perfectly frank, that's been SOP as long as Ron's been here.
Then, thank you. Good.
Okay. Any, so, yes, Glenn?
I was, I asked Andy, I didn't realize he was leaving, but I asked Andy at the beginning of the meeting, if I could get the board's permission for Buck to install his underground electric line from Route 90 into the property. His other lines are down, and I know that you're still waiting on results from, the secret review, you're still waiting from OPRHP.
Right. The board will recall that some months ago, I think it was back in December, because of the exterior changes made to a historic structure, that you wanted a referral made to Ship-O, that referral's only recently been accomplished due to the board's delay in obtaining information from the applicant's architect. It's now in the hands of Ship-O, but their response is still to be forthcoming. But this concerns only the utility extension that's to be done underground and is shown on the plans.
Is there any other work associated with that that has to be done through the board? I mean, this, I mean, this site clearing or?
Well, no more site, no, no more than necessary to trench out the, and it's all meadow. I mean, they're not, we're not, I don't believe, I walked this site, I don't believe there's any trees that have to come down.
I'm confused. What are you asking for, Glenn?
Ask, we, we need a new electric service. The old electric service that came in off of the side road is down and broken and not gonna be adequate and not, not advisable to upgrade it. So, they want to bring a new electric service in from 9D and bring it underground and trench it into the.
All right, isn't that a building inspector issue? Why is that a planning board issue?
Well, secret's open. It's part of the site plan. I, we're, it's sort of a, little bit of a catch-22 situation. We need the electric and we don't have it. I mean, we'll go to the building inspector, but I just wanted to, and I didn't want to go having somebody trenching.
You didn't want to have people say you're doing work without having your approval. So, you wanted to apprise the board? Is that the idea?
Well, yeah, I just want to make, I guess I'd like it, like you to know it and say it's okay to go ahead with it.
Well, I don't think this board can approve that. I mean, what kind of approval is it? What would we grant?
Hmm?
I'm trying to be a wise guy. I literally don't know.
No, I understand. I guess, I guess I understand the problem. I mean, we just need to get electric in there, and would we, I don't want to put us in jeopardy here.
All right. Ron, you don't think it would affect the site plan, or do you think it would affect the site?
Doesn't at all, as I understand it, they lost electric service in the storm. So, the intent is not to replace something they're gonna abandon. Their intent is to put in a new service. It's been shown to extend a new electric service underground from 9D.
All right. Well, why don't you have a motion to direct the engineering consultant to send a letter to the building inspector to that effect, and then you can see the building inspector and make sure, I don't even know that you need his approval to put out.
I don't think you need his approval either, but we'll check with him. I'll, I'll check with him. That'd be fine.
So, just send a letter saying, the site plan before us, they proposed to put in a line, we don't believe it'll have any bearing on the site plan. If he needs something from Greg, then.
And so, do we need to make a motion that?
Yeah, just make a motion, have Ron send a letter.
Second? Neil, Peter, all in favor? Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else anybody wants to talk about?
All right.
All right. Anybody want to make a motion to close the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, do we get a second? Sorry. Aye. Okay.
All right.